Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice is forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 22, 2024, and posted on the Bolton Board the same date. All notices are filed with the same clerk. On to special event applications. Alicia.
Good evening, NIA Council. There are two applications before you. First one is for the Springwood Park Christmas tree lighting, and the second one is for the polar bear race.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Good evening, everyone, and just wanted to take this time to wish each and every one of you a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, and I just wanted to remind everyone that the Qantas celebration is on the 14th at the Asbury Park Senior Center at noon, and the tree lighting in Springwood Park is at 5:00, also on the 14th. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn. Mayor Moore.
Thank you, no.
Okay. Deputy City Manager John Hayes.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. City Attorney.
Likewise, nothing at this time.
Thank you. We're now on to a presentation of the City of Asbury Park 2025 Reassessment Summary by our tax assessor, Michael Del Rey. Michael.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Michael Del Rey. I'm the city assessor. I'm going to go through a brief presentation here. It is also up on the website in another version, a Word version. So if anybody's feeling particularly masochistic and you want to reread this stuff, it is there for your retrieve. Okay, can everybody hear me if I'm on the microphone here? Okay, so the primary objective of the assessing function is to distribute the tax levy. And by that, I mean there is no over collection or under collection. The levy is satisfied, and that's it. Nothing more and nothing less. So to illustrate the relationship between the tax levy and the tax rate, we have a couple hypothetical scenarios here. So if you look here on the left-hand side, sorry, we can't, we don't have the... All right, so the little column here, this is the 2024 city value, just over $3 billion. The corresponding tax rate on the right-hand side is 1.582. So in our hypothetical, if you look at the orange column, if the city value in 2024 were half of what it was, the corresponding tax rate would be double. Likewise, if the 2024 hypothetical city value was double of what it was, so $6 million, the corresponding tax rate would be half, 0.791. And that's just to illustrate the relationship between the tax rate and the city aggregate value. The 2025 net value for the City of Asbury Park has increased by 9.02% from prior year. And here we have the individual aggregate values going back to 2025. So at the bottom, you can see the total ratable base for the city at just over $3.3 billion, with a 9.02% increase from 2024. The real estate market remains strong. Per Zillow data, the average New Jersey home value is just over almost $536,000, while the average home in Asbury Parks sits well above that at $638,485. So while appreciation has normalized to some extent, limited housing supply is supporting elevated home prices. And here again, for the Zillow Home Value Index, you can just see the historic price appreciation since COVID. Mortgage rates declined mid-2020-24 and increased slightly towards the end of the year. Through November, they increased again before dipping back down in September. Currently, the 30-year is around 6.7, and the 15-year mortgage is around 5.9. So as mentioned, limited housing stock is helping keep price points elevated. And as you would expect, the orange metric here is the average sale price, and the blue is the average assessment, both trending upwards. Assessments are dictated by the market. There were 231 usable sales in 2023 and 2024, and these are the sales that are analyzed to help set the assessments for 2025. Annual inspections. So the goal of the assessment function is to distribute the tax levy fairly through market value assessments, and collecting data on homes through the annual inspection cycle helps to improve the accuracy of those assessments. So Asbury Park is currently in its third cycle. We're doing 20% annually through five years. So once every five years, each property has an inspection. This is the inspection area for 2024. It's the yellow border. I'm not sure if you can see it too well, but it's basically the majority of the east side, going from Main Street to the beginning of the waterfront redevelopment area. So the city aggregate value increased a little over 9% from the prior year, but individual assessments will change based on a multitude of things. Permits, sales, demos, and reassessment modeling will all impact property values. The New Jersey property taxes are collected to satisfy the tax levy, and this is the 2024 distribution of that levy. So you can see the components of the levy. You have the district school at 51%, the local at 34%, the county at 11%, and then you have a couple smaller levies in the library, the county health, and the open space. This is the 2024 tax rate certification schedule. So as we talked about on an earlier slide, this is the total tax levy, and the tax rate is computed by simply dividing the total amount to be raised through taxation through the total value of the city. And this is 2024. And then you can see the amount for each individual levy. Straight through, the school was over 24 million. Local municipal was over 16 million. The county was at 5.3. And then you have a couple smaller ones that are under $1 million each. Tax levy will change annually based upon the requirement of operating costs. But the Board of Education is still being impacted largely by the S-2 legislation. So you can see here, the total tax levy changed by $6.8 million. Of that $6.8 million, 5.6 was because of the district school budget. So that represents 82% of the tax levy change from the prior year. Now, this is the municipal portion of your tax bill only on the average assessed home going back to 2019. In 2019, the taxes on the average assessed home were $3,082, municipal portion only. In 2024, they were $3,214. So a total five-year increase of $132. Not too bad. Our governing body has done a fantastic job being mindful of their budget. And no, they did not pay me to say that. These are just the numbers. They're just the numbers. The school, on the other hand, and... Is there anybody here for the school board? Okay, so we can continue to talk about it. This is a legislative issue. I'm not throwing them under the bus. These are just the numbers. It's, you know, it's making things difficult in Asbury, for sure. The five-year school taxes on the average assessed property in 2019 were $1,472, and in 2024, $4,715. So that's a $3,243 increase on your school portion of the taxes only for the average assessed home. Okay, so in summary, Asbury Park is a complex market and municipality with a tax levy of over $48 million that requires accurate assessments to fairly distribute that tax levy. The end.
Then we'll have public questions when we go to the public session.
So please sit over. Should I take it with me?
They're probably going to need your space, so please.
Thanks, Mike. All right, our next presentation is by The Crossroads at Asbury Park LLC for potential redevelopment of 705 Second Avenue, Block 2703, Lot 3, the former Holy Spirit Church.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Josh Cudre, appearing from the law firm of Sales, Commiss, and Gross on behalf of The Crossroads at Asbury Park LLC.
So Josh, thank you. And before you start, just going to do a little bit of housekeeping.
Yep.
And this is not a dig. You are the applicant. This is factual. We all know several items of information. It is impossible for the mayor to either kill or pass anything with only one vote. We also know that the mayor can set the agenda. If I was told last week when we were going through the agenda that taxes were not paid for this piece of property, I probably would have said, "Tell them to pay it by Monday, the 9th, and they'll be on the presentation tonight." While some employees didn't know about it, I was uninformed about this yesterday, so I do not find this to be totally your fault. So that's why we're going to proceed with the presentation. And I'm under the understanding that the taxes will be paid Monday. Correct. So thank you.
Mayor, and I'd like to...
Just wanted to clean that up.
Thank you. I appreciate the commentary, and certainly we understand, and that's the commitment from our side, that that issue will be taken care of. And we appreciate you allowing us to proceed, and the council allowing us to proceed this evening, so...
Okay, thank you.
Great. Sure. So obviously, being cognizant of the time and the agenda that you all have before you this evening, I'm going to be very brief with my comments, but I did just want to thank you all again for taking the time to hear us out on this proposal. The project that we're going to be discussing is for the property located at 701-705 Second Avenue, and it's obviously the Holy Spirit Church site. It has been a long process and collaborative process with the city as well as the public. We were last before you, or some of us were, on February 14, 2024. We received some comments from the council as well as members of the public, and we've gone back and made some iterations to the plan that we're going to be presenting to you this evening. So this is obviously an ongoing process, but we really like this version of the plan, and we would be prepared to proceed with this, obviously with the understanding that there is a long road ahead as far as the redevelopment process goes. But with me this evening, I have two witnesses that would like to guide us through this presentation. We have our professional planner, John Barry from Hire, Grow, and Associates, and we have our traffic engineer, Nicholas Kennedy from Stonefield Engineers. I just want to note for the record as well that Joseph Hannah, who's one of the principals of the applicant entity, is here with us as well this evening, so...
Great.
That's all I have. I'd just like to kick it over to John, and he can take us through the slide deck.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. John Barry, a professional planner with the firm Hire, Grow, and Associates. Nice to see you all again. So just to revisit where we stand with the property and the project, we're looking at the Holy Spirit, former Holy Spirit Church property on Second Avenue, Second Avenue in the corner of Bond Street, just in from Main Street. We've got the church and the former auxiliary building and parking lot area. As Josh said, we are following up on our conversation that we last had on Valentine's Day before you. So the purpose of the meeting is to really, again, present the concept, present the changes that we've made, discuss how we've taken the city, the council, and the city's professionals' feedback to heart to try to modify the presentation and modify the concept for you. Just to set the stage again for where we are, there is a subdivision approval to demolish the church and create six lots in the single-family zone that's in place today that would allow the construction of six new single-family houses. Our goal is to get through this presentation, hear some additional feedback, and hopefully move forward with the redevelopment process in collaboration with the city. And all the attendant process that goes along with that, the redevelopment investigation, planning process, financial arrangements, everything that's standard part of how the redevelopment process unfolds. So that is many opportunities to review details, to continue to collaborate, and continue to have the plans evolve during that process if we can come together on the basic parameters. So the main changes since February are we've reduced the height of the building by about 15 feet from what was presented before. That came about after we removed one of the floors of the building, so it's one floor lower and about 15 feet shorter than it had been last you saw it. One of the floors, at the time we presented in February, there were two floors of structured parking. One of the floors was removed primarily in response to conversations with the city's financial professionals about what it means to have two floors of structured parking for the pro forma of the project and what that would mean for the city's bottom line, essentially. So in evaluating that balancing act, it was determined that it would be best to remove one of the floors of parking. The second major change was to remove the theater concept from the basement of the church building. There had been a goal to provide some theater space with a number of 75 to 125 seats. At the time, there were several different concepts. That's been removed in response to concerns about parking. Nick will provide additional background on parking, but as far as our view of the project, it's best to remove the theater in the interest of not creating those intense peaks during theater events. So that trade-off seemed to be responsive to what the city said to us. The third major change was to increase the percentage of income-restricted units in the project. When we had presented last, we talked about 15 income-restricted units, which came out, I believe, to 17% or so of the development. We bumped the number up to 18, which is 20% of the units in the project. And then lastly, we reviewed... There had been previous conversations about the type of pilot, type of financial arrangements that the developer was going to request from the city. Those conversations have evolved. We've had an opportunity to discuss with the city's financial professionals to come up with a form of pilot that is consistent with what the city typically would look for and makes the project work for both parties, in theory at least. So back to the pretty pictures. This is the proposed rendering concept view of the project with the church building remaining in place, which we see is one of the major driving forces behind this concept, is that the church building gets to remain where it has been for well over 100 years. The building you see on the left is the proposed residential structure that is ground floor with a few amenity spaces for the building, primarily parking. And then you've got six levels of residential units above with additional amenity spaces. Close-up renderings, the types of streetscape that would be anticipated blending the two buildings together, incorporating some public art, and trying to continue with an overall arts-centric, culture-centric concept that fits in well with the city. Ground floor plan. This plan hasn't evolved at all since the February meeting, so this is the same as it has been. A proposed café with 50 seats in the apps up toward the altar area, and then repurposing some of the pews in the church for different seating areas throughout, and the creation of some artisan spaces to be used as a combination of workspace, gallery space, and general gathering spaces within the building, designed for flexible commercial use and arts-centric uses. These are the same graphic depictions that you saw the last time we presented of what it would be anticipated to look like within the church after the renovations are undertaken. So view toward the café area by the altar, and then more of a side view of the church to some of those artists' stall kinds of spaces. The lower floor, which is called the basement, but it's really at-grade. The lower floor is where we've made a significant change. The top of the screen, the area up here, is where the theater space had been proposed. The space of the workspace, the open workspace and office spaces in this area had been previously proposed. So in eliminating the theater concept, those have been extended throughout the remainder of the basement floor, which would provide additional office space that we anticipate is available to smaller users in a flexible manner. The development team is certainly open to prioritizing local groups, nonprofit groups, and working through any kind of agreement with the city that would help to make that happen. The elimination of the stage and theater area obviously has parking implications, and so Nick will touch on that a little bit more. Moving over to the residential building, the proposed new structure. Got a six-story building with 90 proposed residential units, which, as I said, 18 of those would be allocated for income-restricted units, so 20% of the project. The ground floor level includes 74 parking spaces. And the design intent behind the parking ratio is that the Main Street redevelopment plan, which is immediately next door to this property, requires 0.9 parking spaces for each market rate unit. And based on a similar ratio, this project would meet the intent of, or meet the requirement of the redevelopment plan that regulates the land immediately next to the property. So that's what we were looking at as a comparable ratio. The ground floor has tenement amenity space that we'll look at in a moment as well. So as I said, the parking on the left anticipated to be a small gym and other tenant amenity or potentially storage space. These are conceptual plans, so there's a lot of details that would need to be fleshed out over time, certainly through any kind of technical review process and prior to making it to a planning board meeting. The building will have bike storage. It will have electric vehicle charging spaces as mandated by state law and any other number of other details that we would flesh out over time. The main residential floor would be next up, above the parking level. And then the second residential floor would have a pool deck area that would include some screening landscaping to both buffer any activity on that space from the street and also to create a private space for the tenants of the building. That has the advantage of being on the south side of the building, so it would get the sun generally for the pool deck. The upper floors continue on more or less the same. The building's got a mix of 46, right now, conceptually, 46 one-bedroom units, 28 two-bedroom units, and 16 three-bedroom units. One change we made in reducing the height of the building overall is to create four small lofted penthouse-style units. So on the upper residential floor, four of the three-bedroom units would be outfitted with some additional space and private roof terraces connected to those loft areas. And with that, I'll pass it over to Nick.
Do you want us to ask questions at the end, or...
Defer to you, Mayor.
Yeah, defer to you, Mayor.
Okay. 83 feet. Go back to the picture.
Yep.
Maybe it's deceptive. The building looks humongous next to the church. Is 83 feet within the... Do they need a variance for that, Beth, or is that within the...
They will need a variance for the building height.
What is the maximum variance now? Maximum height now?
It is... I think it's a residential height of perhaps 35 feet, but I can confirm it just a moment.
If you go to the page with the parking...
Yes.
So I understand, like, where it says nine lifts, 18 spots. I don't understand how four lifts can... And 15 spots.
So the label is obscuring some of what we're looking at here, I think. And I think the intention is that the 15 spots is... There's two stacked tandem spaces, front-to-back spaces here. That would be four, and then there's a row of...
Okay, there's others.
There's a row of seven spots there. Gets us to 11, and then the four lifts on top of that makes 15. So the label's blocking up a little bit of our view, and that 15 spots is all this L-shaped area.
What would the size of the parking stalls be?
The size of the stalls are anticipated to be a standard 9 by 18, you know, depending on structural configurations. When the architects get to details, they could be pinched a little bit, but I think that's the intent.
You say you could put in more stackers. Why don't you?
Well, I think it's a... Ultimately, would be a conversation about cost and whether the benefit of the additional cost outweighs the reduced revenue that may come from the project. So when we talk about different goals of the partnership with the city, one of those things was the fiscal side of it. And so increasing the project costs would impact that bottom line for the city as well.
With the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom units, we'll get a dedicated parking spot, and then everybody else will be a lottery or something. Using the stackers, will you have a 24/7 attendant, or the resident's going to have to operate this up-and-down lift?
I think that remains to be seen. There's different designs out there. There's different... I'm sure you've seen some styles that have come before you at the planning board. It'd depend on the type of stacker, and it would depend on whether or not those... The two stacked spaces then would be allocated to a single unit in some scenarios.
Okay. I've read that there's 25 Wall Street parking spots dedicated to the church. Where are they?
The... I believe that was a part of the previous configuration when we were discussing having additional parking through a valet system for the church. Right now, the proposal is to have the residential parking as shown here for the building. There's a driveway area behind the church that could be used for loading and for some limited parking.
Okay, so what I read, 25 dedicated spots for the church use is not happening.
At this point, that's not... That was part of the prior discussion, yes.
And last question for me. What are the square footage of the lofts?
I don't have them specifically here. I apologize. Ballpark, I would say probably 450 to 500 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions?
So I just have a quick question about the amount of impervious surface. It looks like, you know, there's not a whole lot of greenery, and this lot is really covered by concrete, Frank. What is your plan for stormwater management? And how would you address all of this?
Sure.
Part of greenery.
With the first caveat that I'm not an engineer, so I wouldn't be the one designing it at any time. Second caveat being that these are conceptual plans. There's some space between the two buildings that could accommodate green space. There's different methods of managing stormwater that include underground systems. And there's a possibility of discussing green roof system for the new building. There's a number of possible avenues, but at this conceptual stage, we don't have that designed yet.
And I just want to say, irrespective of whether or not it's conventional zoning or redevelopment, we have to comply with all the state standards. So the latest DEP regulations would apply. We'd have to comply with those. As far as stormwater management goes, quality, retention, everything else, so...
So on a lot this size, and maybe that's a question for you, should there be this much impervious material on a lot that's this size?
So I think there are a couple things that the council can consider.
Why, just for the audience? A lot of people won't let you introduce who you are, who you work for.
Sure. I'm Becky Madison, the city's consulting planner at Big Pod, Madison Associates. And so the question about whether or not this is an appropriate level of impervious surface, so it's a couple things. One, I do agree that no matter what avenue this project proceeds, if it proceeds, they're going to be required to meet the state's stormwater management requirements. But I do want to highlight the fact that this is not... While there's not a lot of greenery shown on the plan, this is not a significant loss of greenery either because the site consists of the existing church as well as the parking lot. So I think that should be considered. I also think the fact that the site is proximate to the Main Street redevelopment area, which is one of the more developed, busy areas of the city where you would expect, and I think it's appropriate, to have less green space and less impervious... think it's appropriate to have less green space and less impervious cover. So between that, the existing paving and other forms of impervious cover, and the requirement to meet the state's stormwater management regulations, I'm comfortable with the level of impervious cover here. That said, I do think it's important that the developers, if this proceeds, look for opportunities to create green space along the project between the buildings and where possible to try to create the greenery from stormwater management and environmental as well as an aesthetic perspective. And if I can just circle back on the building height, I just confirmed it is a single-family residential height, the maximum height is 30 feet in this area.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, no, I can quit. So when this was first proposed, this has gone through months of revisions to the financial analysis of it, right?
It has, yes.
Okay. So in terms of the six mansions that would be built, or large houses that would be built, can you tell us what the city's revenue would be?
Sure. So I have a very brief financial slide here. Based on the conversations with Mr. Aguirre, the city's financial analyst, his estimation for what similar-sized houses would be going for in the city, you know, up high $2 million potentially, that the taxes would probably be in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $350,000 a year, and that based on the analysis he reviewed with my client, with Mr. Hannah, the applicant, that a service charge, a pilot with a 10% service charge at stabilization would produce a similar revenue from the beginning. They would be fairly equal from a taxation standpoint.
And that's drastically different than your first question?
It is. I would say that we were probably talking about more than twice the revenue to the city with this proposal than we had talked about back in February.
I just had one more question. So initially, this project, you described as an arts and cultural center, and now what we're saying is just visual arts. Is there a plan for creating other arts within that cultural center?
So the main floor of the church is, would primarily be devoted to visual arts or crafts type of activities. There is some stage space, anticipated small, you know, small performing arts stage space that would not have dedicated seating. It would be incorporated with the cafe area, so not something that would attract a, you know, a significant crowd necessarily. The lower level of the church, as I said, we shifted from more of the performing arts-centric space to the office space in response to concerns about parking primarily. You know, I think that this project hopefully has a long life, and who's to say over time if that space can't evolve, but for now, the goal would be to have the flexible office space to help balance the parking concerns. You're welcome.
One question. Your parking analysis?
Well, he's going to give the presentation.
Yeah, my colleague is going to provide some background on that, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Just for everyone's information, I'm Nick Kennedy. I work for Stonefield Engineering and Design. I'm a licensed professional engineer who specializes in traffic and transportation engineering. I've prepared hundreds of traffic and parking studies throughout New Jersey. So obviously, with a project like this, there's multiple facets to analyzing the parking for this development. There's the residential portion, and then what I'll consider the multi-use portion. So starting with the multi-use portion, there's the cafe portion, the artist marketplace, and then the office space. So what our office did was we utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They've done hundreds of studies of parking data and sites like this to get a grasp on what the parking demand for this site would be. We utilized the maximum parking that the IT publishes to come up with a rate of how much on-street parking this site, this half of the site at least, would need. And what we found was during the weekday peak period, we would need 46 on-street spaces to be available, and during the weekend, we would need 24 spaces. The difference is mostly looking at that office space, likely nobody's going to be there on the weekend, nobody or minimal people. The second part of looking at this multi-use space was looking at the on-street parking. We conducted parking counts in a, essentially a two-block box from the site, so two blocks east, two blocks west, two blocks north and south, to get an understanding of what the parking demand in the area is. And what we found was that during these November counts, there was more than enough parking to accommodate what would be needed on-street for the proposed development. I'll just jump out ahead. Obviously, these counts were done in November. This is not the busiest time in this area. But again, I think as we mentioned, this is not the end of the project, and we'd be more than happy to work with the counts on doing any additional counts that they see fit in this area. So moving on to the residential portion of the site, again, we were trying to keep in line with that Main Street redevelopment plan, which requires 0.9 spaces per market-rate unit and doesn't require parking for income-restricted units. The 72 market-rate units would require 65 total parking spaces. The parking garage designed has 70, sorry, 74 parking spaces. So we would be keeping in line with those parking requirements of the redevelopment plan right next door. There's a number, there's a number of different ways that parking could be allocated. I think we mentioned, maybe the two- and three-bedroom units get dedicated, one parking spot, and the other 30 are up for grabs, are first-come, first-served. The 72 market-rate units could all be dedicated at least one spot. There's a number of different ways it could be done, but again, we do meet the parking requirement as it relates to the redevelopment plan that's directly next door. I think one of the important things when we did our analysis and taking a look at both portions of the property is we were trying to be as conservative as possible and didn't take any credit for residents who might bike or use the train or scooter or walk to work, things like that. We didn't take that, any of those credits into account. So we wanted to say, here's the worst-case scenario, and I think that's what we did here. So again, there's enough on-street parking when we took a look at our, you know, three weeks ago, the counts we've done, there is ample parking on-street to accommodate the multi-use portion of the development, and the residential portion of development will be accommodated within the parking garage. I'm happy to answer any questions about that part.
Thank you. I think you mentioned it, and I saw it myself. When we're done, I'm going to give this to James Banana, because you mentioned like there's 21 parking spots on Main Street, but there's 24 cars parked there. So something wrong?
Yeah. So again, keeping in line with having a conservative analysis, there's plenty of illegal parking everywhere. What we wanted to do is make sure we counted the actual number of cars parked, because if, you know, that was enforced and they had to move their car, they would be taking up a spot. So even if they were parked in a spot that's not actually a parking spot, we did count the car.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you going to do another study during our high season?
We'd be happy to work with, you know, the council and any professionals on when they would like additional counts done. Again, we do rise, it was more of a time-based thing, but we did counts in November, and that's not the peak of this area, so we'd be more than happy to work with.
Councilmember Clayton, I would say that that's typical during the redevelopment plan process or the site plan approval process. I know we're getting way down the road, but these counts would certainly be updated in advance of any application being filed for a site plan approval.
Thank you. I have a question. Most of the homes in that area are 30 feet tall, and your building is 83. So that's towering over the homes there, and it's going to look a little congested.
I understand your concern, so there's a few factors. So the church itself is, I believe, roughly 70 feet tall, so it's not a small building. The bulk of, let me move back to our rendering so I can illustrate my point. The bulk of the building has some breaks in it. So there's the tall part, that is the six-plus-story part that shifted more toward Main Street, that's on the left side of the screen. The shorter part that's up at Second Avenue across the street from the beginnings of the residential properties there is in line with the height of a residential building. So that's only two stories there, so that would be under 30 feet tall. The Main Street corridor, obviously not a very tall corridor right now, mostly two, three-story buildings in that area. You've got the restaurant next door at the corner that's two and a half stories maybe. So yes, it would be taller than those buildings, little bit taller than the church, but the intent of the design is so that it's not just a big monolith, it's not a big block just sitting there. It's got some bends to it because of the shape of the property, it's got some stepping in as you get taller, again, because of proximity to the neighboring buildings. So, you know, it's tall. Part of the height, reason for the height is so that there's a viable project here with enough units to support the development and the preservation of the church. But the architects have done a thoughtful job of trying to balance some of those issues and consider the neighborhood in moving that massing more toward Main Street and breaking it up a little bit.
And I understand what you're saying, but it's still, to me, when I'm looking at that area, to me, it's going to be very congested with the height. And I understand the church is tall, but then there was that open space, and I believe the rectory or the other buildings that were attached to that, they were lower, so then there was the open space. And it just, to me, it looks as though it's going to be congested.
I understand. Thank you.
When you were reviewing the parking analysis, did you happen to take a look, is that a street that predominantly has driveways or does not have driveways? And maybe Beth knows that. If you don't, because my recollection is, it's a street that has a lot of driveways.
Yeah, I agree. The majority of homes or buildings along Second do indeed have driveways. There are, and as the markings have revealed, there's still a number of parks that can park on the street, but the majority of the buildings do have access to a driveway, some of which have parking to the rear. I do need to recognize that not all of those buildings are single-family, you know, one-family homes. And so it's not, it's not as simple as every family having a driveway. But the simple answer is yes, the vast majority do have driveways.
And the vast majority of the homes are multiple dwellings?
I do believe that's...
Yes.
Everybody's done?
Okay. So just to wrap us up, we've got, as I said, an evolution here of the project over time. We've been working very closely with the city's professionals to try to resolve some of the hurdles that were relayed to us. We feel that there are numerous benefits to the project, continue to maintain the Holy Spirit Church structure in its place where it has been, bringing some new life to it with architect, with artistic and cultural space, along with some office space and other commercial use that would be beneficial to the city. And then developing a new residential building that includes 20% income-restricted units, market-rate apartments that have not, been a whole lot of those built in that part of town recently, and continuing to support the Main Street corridor, which has, you know, generally seen less investment than certainly the waterfront and some other parts of the city. And ultimately, we feel the project brings a financial benefit to the city based on the analysis that's been done, some of the changes to the development parameters, and it would certainly be no worse than even with the proposed or the potential single-family residences. So just to sum up, conceptual rendering of six residences on six lots that are based on the subdivision that was approved, and then the alternative being the proposed new residential building next to the church in its place. So we thank you for time, and certainly look forward to hearing from everybody.
Now we're going to go to the open, so I'll just say that we're sure you're going to have questions. Thank you.
May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there'll be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Yes, Dan Shonelmayo, 615 Asbury Avenue, corner of Asbury and Bond. So I'm very familiar with the parking on Bond Street from Asbury to Second Avenue. You know, on my block between Asbury and First Avenue, there are probably only six houses. I'll go home tonight, and I'm lucky I have a driveway, there'll probably be at least six to 10 work vans. Parking is atrocious in the southeast quadrant of the city, around Bond Street from Asbury to Second and Third Avenue. You don't have enough parking. You said you went two blocks. You went up to 6:30 at night in November. I mean, people come home later than that. You've got to measure it overnight is a real problem, parking on these streets, Bond Street, First Avenue, Second Avenue. That gets worse on the weekend nights. It's terrible in the summer. I mean, having 90 units and you only have 74 spaces, doesn't seem right to me. I want to ask a question. Does the pilot that they're proposing include like the other pilots where they will be exempt from paying school taxes?
I would say yes.
Yes, okay. That is something that needs to stop in this city. It is just simple math. The school, we're getting killed by the school taxes. The school budget will be what it is. If there's 100 people paying the school taxes versus 200 or 300, those 100 properties will be paying more. It's just simple math. We have to stop exempting properties, developments. This is not in the Main Street redevelopment, it's adjacent to it. There's too much density here, there's not enough parking. Please do not give it a pilot. Do not let them get away with this to exacerbate the congestion of parking in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Mayor, for the record, it's not a, just to clarify the record so everyone's aware, the pilot statute in New Jersey, that's the function. It's nothing specific to the city of Asbury Park or any other municipality. That's the function of the pilot law, but just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Hi, Mike Zdano, Fourth Avenue. You're to be commended for adaptively reusing the church for an arts and culture center, but I question, has anyone on your team reviewed the city-adopted arts and culture plan? Because that pretty much lays out what spaces we need in the city for arts and culture. And what you've got planned, we don't need. So I would suggest that someone on your team look at the plan, read it. It was built over a year's time by the Asbury Park Arts Council with hundreds of hours of input from citizens, and it will give you the layout that should be used in a space of this size. Number two, question, well, number one, that's a question. Has anybody even bothered to look at the arts and culture plan? Because you're proposing an arts and culture use. Question number one. Question number two, has anyone on your team looked at the successful developments of turning churches into creative spaces in Detroit, in New York, in New Jersey? Those are successes that you should start emulating in this space. And number three, no one has reached out to the Asbury Park Arts Council to ask our opinions on how to use this space. So I think before we go any further with this, somebody should talk to us. Anyway, those are my questions.
Thank you.
So I'd be happy to address those points. This has been going, this design process has actually been going on long enough that it predates the final adoption of the arts and culture plan. I have, I am familiar with it. The conceptual space in the church is meant to be flexible, it's meant to have the ability to accommodate a variety of different uses. Right now, we're showing what we show in the concept, but the hope would be that as the project, if the project moves forward, and it could then evolve in collaboration with the city and the arts community, because there will be a substantial amount of space in the building. And the hope would be that it's used in a... be that it's used in an effective way. As to, as to why no one's reached out to the Arts Council directly, I think it might be premature at this point. We're really trying to get the concept off the ground through this process. Certainly, I would hope that there's an opportunity to, if we move forward with the council here, that there's an opportunity to have many of those conversations over time. And then as to whether we have, are familiar with different examples of, of successes, I'd say yes. Mr. Hannah and I have, have shared examples. We've had many conversations about different examples, New Jersey, throughout the country. I've visited several myself. So yes, I'm familiar with and aware of different examples of successful adaptive reuse of church buildings. And stress again that this, we hope is the beginning of the conversation. Certainly, this isn't set in, in any particular stone as to every last detail, so there's time to continue the conversation if the process is going to move forward.
Anybody else like to be heard about this, the tax assessors' presentation, or any other subject about Asbury Park? Please make your way to the microphone.
Good evening. Tom DeSeno, 3600 Route 66 in Neptune. I know for a lot of you in the council, perhaps all of you, your main concern is preservation of the, the former church building, and that's admirable. And I know that a lot of you think you're working with kind of a gun to your head because the developer is saying to you, if you don't give me various concessions, we will knock that building down. And I want to remind you of my position is that that might not be a real gun. Because I have a tape, I've played it in this courtroom from a couple of years ago. Their realtor who saw the contracts went onto a news show and said, when they purchased the building from the parish, they agreed in the contract that they would be forbidden from knocking the building down. Now, here's why that's important. Your talk, the concessions that they're talking about all hurt the taxpayer. I mean, first of all, you've got that they won't be paying the school taxes, and it's funny that this was coupled with that first presentation, showing that when it comes to school taxes, the taxpayers in this city are being treated like a guest at a ditty party. It's just, you're, they're being brutalized. And once again, we're going to do a, a, another, a jab at them where, where another project where they're not going to be paying school taxes. Then you've got the issue of height, you've got the issue of density, you've got the issue of parking. All of these things hurt the taxpayer. So I think you would want to know, before you negotiate with them, is there really the possibility that they can tear this church down? So don't take it from me, this came from their realtor. I would suggest you first ask them to show you every contract they signed, not just the real estate contract, because it could be in another contract. Ask them to see all the contracts they signed with the parish and the bishop to see if that prescription is really there. Not to satisfy me, don't show it to me, don't even show it to the public. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for you to see it. You can look at it privately. And then determine in your own mind if they can't knock the building down. Because before you negotiate, you want to know if that gun is real. So I know that they're going to stand up and say, no, that's not in there, but then ask them, well, then show us the contracts to prove it and see what their response is then. So I ask you, please, before you harm the taxpayer with increased taxes, worsening the parking, height problems, density problems, at least satisfy yourself that you're negotiating, knowing all the facts and knowing their position. And don't tell me, don't tell the public, please just satisfy yourself and get a copy of those contracts to see what's in there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to respond, if I could briefly. Mr. DeSeno, it's good to see you. I don't know if you recall, the last time I saw you was in Judge Thornton's courtroom, and I heard very similar arguments made before that judge. And frankly, I have a recording that you all could listen to. It's on NJE Courts, and the judge made a decision on, on those arguments. I do want to just remind the public and the council that the church signed off on the original subdivision application, which of course necessitated the demolition of the church, so I think that speaks for itself. Just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard about any subject? If not, we're, oh, I'm sorry.
Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I just have two questions. One is, always when we hear about affordable housing, what does it mean in Asbury Park? Does it mean affordable for the people who live here, or does it mean affordable for Monmouth County? What are you projecting those affordable units to go for? And I'm just looking at my building, which is on Deal Lake Drive, and I'm looking at the, the amount of taxes we pay, and it's, it's likely to be way more for a 33-unit building than $350,000. So it seems like 90 units, if, with the median amount of taxes in the city, which this isn't going to be median because there's some luxury there, would be upwards of $450,000. But that's just me. You guys have to explain it. The other question I have has to do with another development that's in the packet, which is on Deal Lake Drive. Can you educate the community about what that, it's not for you guys. Can you educate the community about what that, the Eighth and Grand Development is going to be? Because it looks like, I, I can't visualize it where it is. Is it, is it Dr. Lepis's property or the property next to it? But it looks like a decent amount of building on, on Eighth and Deal Lake. So if you could educate me on that or educate the public on that. But thank you very much.
Okay, Carrie, I don't have a clue.
Oh, that's one.
Okay, Michelle, please. And just introduce yourself so that everybody knows who you are.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Alonso. I'm the Director of Planning and Redevelopment. And in your packet tonight is the SDA and referral planning board for the project known as The Views.
Okay.
It's by the mirror mark, between the two apartment buildings on the, at Eighth Avenue, Deal Lake, Kingsley, Seventh Avenue.
Right, and that's why I was confused when she said Eighth and Grand, because I'm like, nothing's going on there.
Right.
So it's Eighth and Deal Lake?
Right.
So that is Dr. Lepis's property?
No.
No.
More towards the beachfront. Go ahead, Michelle.
No, I was going to say it's a property that, in the municipality, was storing our beach equipment in it recently. It's in between the two apartment buildings. It looks like a texture shape.
Okay, okay.
So.
Behind the mirror mark.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
And then put the affordable question.
Sure. So to, to answer that, so as I mentioned, we are proposing 18 income-restricted units. The city has four different levels of affordability spelled out in its ordinance. And one of the things that we would want to continue to discuss, assuming the process moves forward, is how those units would be split up between different income levels. And those range from what's called the middle income level, which sometimes you might think of as workforce housing, that's affordable to people that make between 80 and 120% of the area median income. Then you've got the moderate income level, that's generally 50 to 80%, a low income level, 30 to 50, and then a very low income level. So there's the whole spectrum of what we would call income-restricted. And right now, we haven't finalized how the units would be split up. We've proposed several alternatives that we've discussed with the city's financial analysts, because all of that impacts how the, the building works, both for the developer and for the city. So we have a couple of options on the table, and if we move forward, we'll iron out those details and continue that conversation. You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, Polly Shilga, Fifth Avenue, 1105th Avenue. I'm kind of representing Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition. There was a tiny little line there, where you, you mentioned, people get around the city with bikes and scooters and walking, which they do in Asbury Park, more and more so, hopefully. It's a 1.4 mile square city, so it should be pretty walkable, pretty accessible for everybody. That said, some people choose to drive or have to drive, feel that they have to drive to get from A to B. People visit the city and get to their destinations in a car, like the, the facility that you're proposing, coming to visit, coming to participate in arts and culture and whatever's going on, and living in the building next to the church. I'd like to just ask a question that's kind of tied into that. I looked at your, your closed session. One of the items that you had was a shuttle program proposal. Is that something, James, that you can explain? Is that, is that the mini-transit that we're talking about over the last bunch of years?
That's what we're talking about in closed session. It hasn't been decided yet, so we can't discuss it.
Can't mention it? Is it something like mini-transit, shuttle? It sounds like that's what that is. Can you reveal that?
You can go by the title, and again, we're not, never really discuss that tonight.
Okay, so it was just as an idea, that the options exist, that people can get around a tiny city like this in other ways, other than using cars. And if we dedicate space for parking, that, you know, you have to kind of ameliorate what you're spending your, what we're using your space for and what you're spending your money on. If we allow more and more space for, for storage of cars, that's less space for people to live in. And it does raise the cost of the units that people are going to have to either rent or buy, if there's more space devoted to parking cars. I think you guys probably all know that. That is, that's the science of, of, you know, supply and demand, and so more and more cities are, are offering less and less parking as then it, it avails them more opportunity to provide housing. So yeah, there's still a question about height and density. There's still a question about how much affordable is going to satisfy the needs in Asbury Park. But I just want to lay it out there, that if we continuously use the P-word as the thing that's going to be preventing us from, the parking is the word, preventing us from providing more, more housing, whether affordable or market-rate housing, we, we need to come to a balance, and then there's understanding about, A, the various ways that people get around a city like this, if there's going to be a shuttle service that's going to enable people to get from the possibly proposed parking garage that may enable people to get to their destination without using a car. There are other options out there besides cars and parking. So just throwing it out there, some food for thought.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Make a motion to close as a public?
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all for your time.
I'm going to say just a couple, I got a couple of notes. I'm glad Polly took care of stuff of mine with parking. So to Dan's point, I think a thoughtful discussion on pilots and development is, is needed and something that I think we're working on for 2025. To say just get rid of pilots is saying get rid of affordable housing. The council's passed about five or six pilots outside of the waterfront, half of which were for 100% of affordable housing. So I just want to be clear, when we make, that to me is not a thoughtful discussion saying just get rid of pilots. A thoughtful discussion is talking about when and if we give pilots and what we get back for them. So what we've done basically is given pilots outside of the waterfront for a level of affordable housing. I'm glad Complete Streets spoke. I wasn't sure if they were going to. Parking requirements remain a mystery to me, because you're saying Main Street's .9, this is .75, I-Star has, complaining about two, we have a bar coming in, in the waterfront that's going to have between 300 and 400 people with staff and not a parking spot to be found. So I think when we talk about designing for cars, that, that may not be the best way to design, right? It may be we design to accommodate a car, or we design to accommodate a trolley, or scooters, or bikes, but I don't think we should be designing entire buildings based on you having two cars. 25 years ago, Asbury had nothing but parking in it, because all of us up here were here. It was a sea of parking with no development, very few small businesses. And then the last thing I'm going to say about this, and this is my own personal, all of that's my own personal pet peeve, but we have to stop talking about we care about historic structures and let them fall into the ground. So we either care about historic structures and there's gifts to keep them, whatever those gifts are, and that's certainly a thoughtful dialogue, but let's stop talking about we care about historic structures and then tear them down. This is a structure many, many people care about, myself included, that would like to see preserved. What we do to preserve it is an absolute discussion, but let's not talk about tearing down for six huge houses and then say, oh my God, we care about historic structures. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Same to you. Michael, thank you for your presentation.
Go ahead.
We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive and regular meeting minutes, November 26, 2024. Council meetings. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2024-502 through 2024-505. Do you have a motion for consent?
Check it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-506, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-508, resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-508, resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-509, resolution authorizing change to tax collector change fund.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-510, resolution authorizing the purchase of natural gas supply service for public use on an online auction website.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-511, resolution authorizing the repairs needed to the John Deere front-end loader at the Department of Public Works.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2024-512, resolution authorizing the annual renewal of NICSIL notification system for the police department.
Move it. Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-513, resolution authorizing purchase of spare parking kiosk parts needed for transportation.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Kiosks for transportation.
Spare parts. She's waiting for you to say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, John. Resolution 2024-514, resolution authorizing the purchase of rescue equipment known as the Jaws of Life for the fire department.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-515, resolution approving change order number six for the new fire department headquarters.
With the decrease.
That is true, with the decrease.
Move it.
Okay.
Yes, second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolutions 2024-516 and 517 have been removed from tonight's agenda. We're on to 2024-518, resolution of the mayor and the city council of Asbury Park, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to enter into a subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC and Asbury Redeveloper LLC regarding residential development on Block 4302, Lot 2, which is 201, 203 Eighth Avenue, and referring the matter to the planning board for the appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-519, resolution authorizing federal aid cost reimbursement agreement between the city of Asbury Park and the New Jersey Department of Transportation for construction of the TAP SR-71 Main Street Street Skate Project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-520, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park approving a pilot agreement with Asbury Park Gardens Preservation LLC for Vita Gardens Apartment Complex and Steven Manor at 120 Monmouth Avenue, Block 1201, Lot 1, and Block 1204, Lot 1.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-521, this is a resolution scheduling the city's 2025 reorganization meeting for January 15, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
This is Resolution 2024-499, which was tabled from the November meeting. This is resolution authorizing professional services contract with TM Associates for Design, Contract Administration, and Inspection of Traffic Signal Installation at Grand and Sunset Avenues. I'm looking for a motion to table this to the December 23 meeting. May I have a motion to table?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-499 is tabled to the December 23 meeting. We're now on to ordinances. I have ordinances for introductions. This is ordinance 2024-32, which is the 2024 Transportation Update Ordinance with a public hearing date of December 23, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second, then a question. Move it.
Second.
Question.
Question.
James, is this the thing that I emailed you about, about the one wings?
No. I didn't use it. You got that? That's just, um.
This is different.
This is different. There is a one-way designation in this ordinance for Wind Street, which is narrow enough to be an alleyway.
But not the bigger one.
That was a different conversation that I was trying to have with the council.
Okay. Good.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
No one has anything else? We're on to adjournment.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.